Well, it was a very, very small town. Yeah, just family close friends.
Yes.
All very good.
Okay. How do you say, Tyler, do you think we should call the order?
We should...
Uh, Melanie?
We don't know.
We don't know. She did send me, you know, she had... I should...
This is... Did my office take your child on here when I came here?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know what these two things are. Just thinking, can you fit in? Yeah. Resources are like, have compared to the other islands. Uh, let's support me.
It'll be great.
It's one of them. And my... and my stress is terrible. I'm just getting a cough. No, I have a plan. My, um, thought he was just changing. No, it's not. It's not.
You just let me know when you're ready.
Well, I found stuff. Yes, I have found some stuff over the next. Right.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead.
Even if it's...
Are there any feedback on the previous items?
Oh, I emailed you. Did you...
What did you know?
Stop saying that. It's a very... It's a very...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Of course. Um, I just... Oh, there it is. Oh, yeah, there it is, right here. So I can do it now? You're happy?
I found what I needed for this.
Okay. That's all this meeting to order. Do we have any late items?
Yes, we do have an on-table item, 2.2. It's an updated application from CAUZ.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't know what the difference between the two is, so they want to ask not to.
Okay. Um, motion put through? Second in, on the favor. Okay. First up, we have Mr. Tim Rhodes. Fanfare and everything.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Here on behalf of the Bowen Island Health Center Foundation, I have a couple of members of the board in the, in the audience. Ken MacArthur, Pro Lucas, and Colleen Amigo. I did send you a letter on the 6th of October, and I'm just going to read that so the audience has the opportunity to hear it. I've also got some slides up here that, there are no relationships to anything I'm going to say, are far more attractive than the back of my head. Further to our recent update, the Bowen Island Health Center Foundation wants to clarify that we are not, uh, that we are a not-for-profit society incorporated under the B.C. Societies Act, and are awaiting charitable status designation through the Canada Revenue Agency. The health center will not operate a two-tiered system of health care. Physician services will be built through the Medical Services Plan of B.C., and allied professional services like physiotherapy and other practitioner services will be billed either through extended medical care plans or directed to the patient. To qualify for and maintain CRA's charitable status, the foundation is required to provide universal free services through the health center. These services will be in the form of health education programs in clinics, immunizations, public health nursing, and other VCH services, as well as healthcare navigation services like the Caring Circle, and additional programs and services identified over time. CRA charitable status prohibits the foundation from operating the health center as a two-tiered system. Any surplus earned through rents charged to the physicians and other practitioners will be used to fund program costs and maintain a contingency fund for future capital costs. Planning to date indicates that the main floor of the building will include approximately 6,000 square feet. The foundation plans to purchase strata title to the main floor of the building from the developer at the developer's cost to build and without land costs included, and will undertake interior improvements for the health center space. A $2 million capital fundraising campaign began mid-summer this year, and we are confident in our ability to raise the funds needed to purchase strata title and fund the interior improvements necessary. This will be a community-owned and operated health center, and we have taken steps to ensure that the community interests are protected. There is an excerpt from our bylaws which detail what would happen should we disband or should we decide to sell the facility in order to protect the community's interests. The Bowen Island Health Center Foundation has been grateful, the grateful recipient of two community grants in the past, which have been instrumental in funding the production of fundraising materials, including our website and the brochure which was distributed to you, as well as other collateral material we're using in the fundraising. We did not take part in the latest call for community grant applications. Instead, the foundation is formally asking council to participate with the community in the tending of the health center in the form of a one-time-only grant in the amount of $100,000 to be split between fiscal years 2018 and 2019. The health center's three-year operations budget does not include municipal grants or contributions other than a permissive tax exemption, because once operational, the health center will be self-funding. Like the Fire Hall, the Cove Commons, and the Community Center, the health center is a vital component for a strong and vibrant community. And thank you for listening. And do you have any questions?
I have one concern, and that is ensuring that the main floor of that building becomes a medical center. The way the zoning, the rezoning application reads is that medical center is in approved use, but not exclusively so. Anything that can be done at Kate's Village Square could be done in that building. And we wanted to do that because with the medical center, if you're not at full capacity the first year or two, you're going to want to rent it out. However, how do we guarantee that the medical center buys that strata lot and only the medical center can operate out of it? Have you thought this one through as far as the protection for the medical center?
Well, we will have an agreement as soon as we have established the size of the space and those parameters, we will enter into an agreement with the developer to purchase the space, which will cover those terms.
Right, but then, but this is after the zoning and everything is done, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And that presupposes that you have sufficient funding to carry on, to actually purchase it and do the finishes. And if you don't have that much fund, funding in place, is the developer guaranteeing in any way that he won't sell that strata lot to somebody else who uses it otherwise?
Well, we haven't had that discussion. We're all proceeding forward with the idea that we will be raising the funding and moving in there. We have not yet had that kind of conversation about what if. We would hope within the next couple of months to know for sure that we're going to get... We have already, I believe, Colleen is the representative here from the capital funding campaign.
We're up to 600 as of today. We've got another 50,000 today. So last time I talked to you, we were at 500, we're at 600. We've probably 10 other major philanthropists who are committed to supporting and just haven't pledged the amount yet are working through their finances. Yeah, they said they'd get back to me in the next month or the next month or so.
Okay, good, thank you. Good morning, any other questions?
I have a number of questions and just a couple of things that I want to confirm. And I guess I'll start, I'll pick up from where Marie left off. I do little contracts for writing and editing work, and I always get a written agreement with the person I'm working with. So you did a good job in terms of anticipating potential problems with the, um, with the society and coming up with those terms of dissolution. But I, as a council member, I would feel more comfortable if there were some sort of written agreement with DK Harris for so many thousand-square-feet facility, you know, between the foundation and the, and the developer in this case. So if you haven't had that conversation with DK Harris at this point, I think it would be advisable. And I think it would, it would give us some comfort in terms of what it is we're approving when we are considering the rezoning. Because at the moment, it's sort of a bit of a moving target from what it was when it was originally presented. So just to confirm a couple of things then. The, in various documents, and I appreciate that things sort of evolve as you go through a process, the facility has been 4,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, 5,500, maybe 6,000. So are you coming to a landing?
Well, the, it's the main floor of the building size which has changed. And obviously, we, our intention is to buy the main floor of the building. Our, our facility size will be somewhere between 4,000 and 6,000. We, we obviously have some more planning to do, and every time the building size changes, things shuffle around considerably. So a short answer is, we don't know what size the actual facility is, but it is the intention to purchase the entire floor so that if we are smaller than that, we can expand.
Okay, so you're just facing the same challenge that we are, and that we don't know the configuration of the building that is actually going to be built there. Vancouver Coastal Health. At various points in your, your letter and the documentation, you talk about liaising with Vancouver Coastal Health. Could you describe what liaison with Vancouver Coastal Health has, that's taken place to date? Is it even in?
I might.
I'll send off to Colleen.
It's okay that I just stay here. Or do you want to go there? Yeah. So, um, so we've had a couple of conversations with some of the head program directors for the North Shore Community Home Support. So Jane Henley's office, who's our community health nurse, she now operates out of her car, basically, and goes from home to home. So we talked to them about, could Jane have an office in the health center so that patients would come to her with the idea that she would probably be able to see far many more patients if the patients came to her unless they were bed bound. And that's what happened in Gabriola. They ended up, the community health nurses ended up having an office in their health clinic, and saw more people. And it was actually a sterile environment with proper lighting and proper sanitation, et cetera, instead of doing dressings on people's couches. So they were very keen to have their community health nurse operate out of the health center. Whether they pay rent, we're still talking to them about that, but that's one practitioner that would work out there.
Have you talked with Mark LaCecian at all, the medical health officer?
No, no. We talked to Sandra Edelman, who's the head of home and community support. And then the, uh, the other practitioners that would probably work in there would be the Vancouver Coastal Health public health nurses. So immunization clinics could be out of the health center instead of maybe out of family place. And, uh, you know, flu vaccines. We also are hoping that the chronic disease department that works out of the West End Community Health Center, so they do COPD clinics, asthma clinics, pre-diabetes clinics, that they all offer free in the North Shore. If we actually had a community use room and our health clinic, they would come over here and offer those perhaps once a month or once every couple of months, those kinds of health clinics.
Have you, as a, as a foundation, have you been talking through the potential integration with the paramedicine program that will be starting on Bowen in the new year?
Yeah. Well, I can jump in on that too, Tim. I mean, we haven't actually talked about whether they'd have an office in our building yet, but that's, that's something that I'd like to see happen where they... Because they're going to have to liaise with the community health nurse. That's how they're going to get the referrals, is the community health nurse, like Jane Henley, who's our nurse now, would make referrals to the paramedicine program to say, "I'd like you to see these five patients of mine." But it would be good for them to have a place to do charting where there's some continuity of care there, so we're hoping that they might have their office out of the health clinic. So they're all talking together, and they're all, yeah.
Okay, and then just two more things. And do you have an expected date for when you might get your charitable status?
Well, that's kind of how long is a piece of string question. The Canada Revenue Agency takes in your application, and then you hear from them if there's a problem, or you hear from them when they have made a decision, and if you haven't heard from them.
Okay, that's funny. And then just the last question, the request for the $100,000 split between fiscal years 18 and 19. I, I would be more comfortable considering that request at a later time. I think that we already had discussion in council saying we would be happy to consider it, but given that we don't have charitable status and given that we're not into detailed discussions of our 2018 budget, it makes sense to defer a decision on that. But from my perspective, that means that I'll look forward to considering it at a later time.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I just have a quick question about the provisions in your bylaws should dissolution ever happen. And I'm wondering if you can just clarify for me what seem to be contradictory ones to me. Hearing that, you know, you're planning to buy the main floor as a strata. 8.1 says, "Should the society be disbanded or dissolved, its assets remaining after payment of all debt shall be paid over and transferred to one or more other charitable organization, associations, organizations, sorry, being qualified, da-da-da-da, located in the province of British Columbia, having objectives similar." So does that mean that your assets could move off the island? And then 8.2 says, "Any healthcare facility constructed at Southwest Corner, da-da-da, Village Drive," so this particular spot is, is specified, "on behalf of the foundation, may not be sold or otherwise disposed of by the foundation without authorizing majority of members." And I don't know enough about your foundation to know how many would be a majority of members at an extraordinary general meeting. So I'm just wondering, could the funds move off island? And if at some point this would happen, how many members would make that vote?
Well, um, if and when this happened, we didn't specify exactly where the money would go. My assumption is it would probably go to someone like the Bowen Island Community Foundation. Obviously, it would be in the best interests of everybody if whatever those assets were stayed on the island.
It says, "Have objectives similar to those of the society," so, but it must be a health center.
Well, I think the objectives are, are basically more charitable rather than specifically health objectives.
Okay, that's somewhere where I would appreciate some clarity. And then about the number of members?
We, at this point, we consider everyone a member. You can become a member by just saying, "Yes, I'd like to be a member." I don't have a current member count at this point. And one would expect that by the time anything close to this ever came to be, we'd have a great deal of members in the community, everyone participating within the facility, for certain.
Okay, and here's another idea. I haven't talked about this with anybody else on council, but it occurred to me that in the case of the Bowen Island golf course, that was a community amenity that came through a rezoning process. And if they cease to be a public golf course, as I recall, land reverts to the municipality because it was a community amenity. No?
No, I think it's a little more convoluted than that, but no, it doesn't revert to the municipality.
You have the right of first refusal along the line.
And if it becomes parled.
Yeah. He can't be used for anything other than a golf.
Right. Anyway, all my point is that it would stay on the island. And that's the kind of clarity I'm looking for here, because it's tied in with the zoning process is the idea of selling off the main floor and it going to a organization in British Columbia, having objectives similar, leaves me a little like, where could it go and who would be the voting? So that's just, some clarification would be helpful to me at some point. Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else?
8.1 is a standard clause that you have to take in order to get your charitable status. And down at the bottom, so this is already in your bylaws.
Yes, this is an excerpt from the bylaws.
And the provisions of 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3 are unalterable. So I don't know that it could be changed at this point.
No, and they're, they're, as you suggested, they're deliberately general because we don't know where we would be if this ever came to. But...
But there could be a resolution of the board.
Yes, we can't alter these, but it doesn't suggest we can't have...
Have a more refining resolution to add comfort. But if you were dissolved, it would be going to a Bowen Island organization.
Okay, I just wanted to, before I go back to you, Gary or Melanie?
No.
Okay, I'll go back to...
At your other, your, your, your previous presentation, I came away with the impression that you were, your foundation is keeping its options open by also expressing an interest in Area 1 of Lot 2, or I'm just, that was the impression I came away with. And, and yet in 8.2 here, I'm saying, I'm seeing that it's very specific to the southwest corner of Dorland Road and Village Drive. So I'm, now you're saying these are unalterable. So are you actually tied to this specific?
Well, it, obviously, if there wasn't a facility there, this, it wouldn't apply. And we'd have to do, but this was drafted probably close to a year ago. And at that point, this was the only focus, and it still is the only focus of the health center. If this rezoning happens not to proceed, then obviously we have to look elsewhere. So in that sense, yeah.
And, Morrie, did you have something else to interrupt?
Um, I'm just wondering if there's an 8.5 clause that specifies the charitable organizations that are appropriate, specifies charitable organizations on Bowen Island. And that would be a way of not altering 1, 2, and 3, but also giving some comfort to people to ensure that if there were an unfortunate dissolution, that the benefits would occur to Bowen Island.
Well, yeah, and I don't think the foundation would have any issue with that. I certainly don't see the foundation wanting these funds to go off of Bowen Island.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an overview of community organization multi-year core funding requests. Each organization is allotted five minutes to provide an overview of their application. I'm going to change the order slightly and put Bowen Heritage first, because I understand who really wants to catch a berry.
Textile lecture tonight, I think. Nice.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So our application is for a contract of 10 hours a week. That's roughly two five-hour days for a volunteer coordinator. The process that we went through in terms of trying to think of what kinds of things might qualify as something that would give us core funding for a staff position, which would be a benefit certainly to us, but because it's funded by the municipality, we wanted to try and think of something that would be of benefit to the larger community as well. So in terms of identifying a weakness within our organization, and we think that it's common to a lot of organizations, there's issues of succession planning. A lot of us, I do a lot of volunteer work, and there's other people in the community that do a lot of volunteer work, and there's a certain amount of burnout. And there's a, a small core group of people that are doing, sometimes considered to be too much. And it's a matter of trying to figure out how to get a lot of the new people that, if you're not commuting, if you don't have kids in school, you might not know everybody, and you might not know all the things that they're capable of doing, the little things that they might be able to help with, or whether or not they're getting cabin fever and bored out of their minds and they want to do major things. It's figuring out what the resources are. So from our perspective, from Bowen Heritage, we, we were thinking about what we need to focus on is developing more information, some sort of a list of the possibilities in terms of who's out there in terms of volunteers, and what kinds of things do we need and others need. So the first thing that we did after a workshop on governance, I met a woman who was new to the oven, who said, "I have no idea what there is available and what I can volunteer for." And I just said, "Come along with me, and I want to do this volunteer fair. It's National Volunteer Week, and we're going to try and put on a volunteer fair." Typical Bowen style, nobody signed up until after. We ran out of time, and we canceled the event. And then it was like, "Oh, I really would have wanted to be there." So I got a lot of feedback afterwards. It was a great idea, and we need to do this. Following that, there was a, the foundation had a community conversation just recently. And out of that, without my prodding, it came up as, one of the issues was that we need to have some sort of volunteer coordination. I had jumped on it, of course, and joined the group that was talking about it, the pull-out groups. And one, number of things that we learned, high school students in this jurisdiction have to put in 100 hours of volunteer work during their years at high school. And most of them do it off-island, and we need to coordinate, for instance, that. There's a lot of seniors that maybe have some time, and we could start mentoring and matching people up. So the idea is to try and figure out something, a position, that would be of benefit, obviously, to Bowen Heritage, but also a much wider audience, so the whole of the, um, the community, in terms of getting that volunteer fair organized so that everybody's at one place, and they're talking about what they need, what they want, what their ideas are, some of their opportunities, to try and avoid as much as possible some of the repetition that is going on, to try and develop contact lists and ways that people can help and what they want to share. And then get into sharing things like training, basic bookkeeping. This is what QuickBooks is all about, how to build a better website, different things. It could be a one-day training workshop that a part-time person could organize, bring in speakers, rent places, and get it organized. So one of the comments in the staff report attached to your agenda was that this doesn't fit neatly within our mandate, that we're supposed to identify heritage buildings and develop tourism and help with education of the community. All of that is accurate, and it's true, but everything that we've done over 26 years, and I think that it's fairly well-recognized, that it's a long and extensive and detailed list, has all been done by volunteers. We've never had a trained physician. So if we can get one person that is going to work towards developing assets for the community, and that was the general gist of the final conversations, that, "Wouldn't it be wonderful if we basically had some help and some organizing?" And if the union doesn't and can't, and for whatever reason, isn't able to do this, we think we can do it reasonably well for what we hope is considered a reasonable amount of money. Now, I'm prepared to play Bob Barker, "Let's make a deal." And, you know, we can knock it back if necessary. I know that there's a very limited amount of money, that's, there's a lot of good proposals. So it can be done on one day a week, and if in terms of, you know, five hours. It's not going to be as expensive, and it's not going to be as detailed, but it certainly can be done. And if we get our foot in the door and we get some work on this, then I think that it's going to be valued in terms of we'll see the results from it. Questions?
Sounds to me like what you're...
So it can be done in one day a week, and if in terms of, you know, five hours. It's not going to be as expensive itself and it is detailed, but it certainly can be done if we get our foot in the door and we get some work on this, then I think that it's going to be valued in terms of we'll see the results from it. Questions?
Sounds to me like what you're describing is a volunteer centre, which exists in a lot of other places around the island. And I don't recall other municipalities funding volunteer centres.
There's, there was money in West End and I believe North, the city and district of North Vancouver, so that there were other positions. We have the advantage, I think, in terms of having free office space, that Metro allows us to use that cottage, so that we don't have that expense. And I think that there are people in all the different organisations that are trying to organise volunteers and they have more or less time depending on, and all the different contacts. So we're thinking that if we can get one person to try and pull that all together and actually coordinate it, that that's something that would be of lasting value.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Did you get your phone next to you? Okay, Bowen Island Arts Council?
First off, may I grab a ticket?
Sure.
Cover demon. This is actually my last time as the Chair of Bowen Island, so it's nice to go. So first off, I want to thank Bowen Municipality, as because of the government, local government funding support since the incorporation in 99, that we have been, BiAC has been so successful. The grant has allowed us to employ professional arts administrators to run our operations and then we can leverage this support to attract additional revenue. Without it, we would have been unable to operate and grow just sort of Bowen Island in the way we do today. So I'm just going to do a quick, short history, just so everyone's on the same page. We have always considered this funding the core support. And I want to give a short overview as to why that is, so if you have any questions about why we receive the funding that we do. BiAC first received funding from Metro Vancouver, then GBRD after recreational master plan was conducted in the late 1990s, before Bowens voted to incorporate. At that time, the Bowen Island Parks and Recreation Commission was receiving funding from local taxes to support physical-based recreational programme. It was recognised locally and federally that arts programming offered an equally beneficial form of recreation in that the arts enhances both physical and mental wellbeing. I think we can all agree on that. In 1998, the Recreation Commission's budget was approximately $280,000. So it was agreed that BiAC should receive approximately 10%, which at that time was $28,000. When we moved into the gallery at Artisan Square, a block booking agreement was signed, which added $7,200 a year. So this amount of $35,200 was the amount that BiAC received for a number of years plus increases for inflation. So move on up to 2005, BiAC was bumped up to $53,200 after the cultural master plan was adopted as an addendum to the official community plan. As you know, the cultural master plan identifies BiAC as the advisory body to BIM in matters concerning arts and culture and tasks BiAC with the implementation of the plan. So in 2010, another increase brought us up to $58,000. By 2012, we were down to $55,000 and by 2014, we received $51,319. So as a result, we are now receiving a grant which is slightly less than what we received seven years ago. And to put it in context, our budget in 2005 was $172,000. Now, our budget is approximately 1.5 times that amount, so we're doing more with less. What we are saying is that you have invested in an organisation that continues to grow and perform each year that the core grant has been and will continue to be integral to fulfilling our mandate as the advisory body concerning arts and culture on Bowen Island. So just briefly, why we should receive core funding? We understand that all organisations on Bowen are committed and doing great work. However, we believe that we are specifically eligible under this new core funding programme because we meet the criteria of an organisation that is delivering services that are identified as the responsibility of local government. BiAC is delivering cultural services on behalf of the municipality. I believe you've read our rationale from arts programming to the implementation of the cultural master plan and as advocates for the Community Centre. We are your partners. We are qualified and capable to carry out this work. We know we do it in a highly efficient and fiscally conservative way. With your support, we're committed to continuing. And before I finish, 2017, you might not realise, is a big year for celebration for BiAC. It's 20 years since the gallery and 30 years since BiAC was created. So I hope you're all going to come to our AGM on Saturday night. We'll have a short AGM, my last, and a rebunkish celebration. So please come. Can I have any questions?
The one question I have, so there's, we have a block booking at the gallery? Oh, so this was, used to be and we don't, but we don't anymore?
No.
Okay, okay, fair enough. That was all I was wanting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll miss you guys.
Yeah. Okay, Caring Circle is next.
Hello. Thank you for seeing me. So you all know really what Caring Circle does, we've been operating for four years now, trying to help people access health services that are having trouble accessing health and social services. As many people say, we're kind of the social worker on Bowen Island right now, so it's not just health gaps, it's social service, mental health gaps that we have on Bowen Island. We are the conduit between those that are needing care, whether it's mental health support or physical care, with those that provide care. We, I think, fulfil.